Okay, good evening. It's Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed sessions since 7:00 for the subjects listed on the agenda. We have six board members present, one absent, and we will stand for the pledge.
............................................................ Okay, so tonight, we have first, the budget public hearing for the 2018-2019 annual budget. So I need to call the hearing to order and do a roll call. Shannon Ebner, Chris Bloom, Jim Collins,
Here.
Karen Stufen,
Here.
Margaret Harrell,
Here.
Cara Ceforio here. Six members present. Mr. McDonough is absent. Now, Mr. Welton will provide the overview of the 2018-2019 budget.
Thank you. The tentative budget was approved at the August 14th board meeting. Notice was published in the newspaper about the budget hearing tonight, and the tentative budget was on display for at least 30 days. So prior to budget approval, the board must hold a budget hearing. And the budget must be adopted by September 30th. So we are under the wire there on the deadline. Changes from the tentative budget. Most of the changes are just getting the estimated amounts to the more current information that we have. As far as the evidence-based funding model, the state Board of Ed increased our allocation to $6,495,500, which was an increase of $185,500. That was, we were right on the cusp between Tier 3 and Tier 4, which is 99, or the 100% of adequacy puts you in Tier 4. We were at 99% of adequacy, so that put us in Tier 3. So that resulted in the increase. Corrected a couple of the categorical grant amounts, and we had to adjust one transfer in the debt service fund. As usual, our mix of operating revenues, 89% local, 83% is property taxes. As far as the revenues go, we talked about this at the last meeting. We had the timing, timing of revenue collections had a significant impact on the budget in two areas, property taxes and state funding. Due to that change in the federal law, many taxpayers paid their property taxes in December, and that increased the collection percentage to early receipts in May and June, which increased the revenue in last fiscal year 18. The June collection was 54.56%, average June collection being 49.36%, so 5.2% more than our average June collection, which pushed about 5.4 million more in the operating revenues into fiscal year 18. Then on the state funding, in 18, we had the new evidence-based model, which made those payments more timely in state, and the state funding shifting money into 18. So the 18 money, funds, revenues were inflated, which makes the 19 state revenues look, well, they're, the budget is less than the prior year. On the expenditure side, we had more accurate salary information, and I don't want to steal the broker's thunder, the thunder that's coming next week. Very exciting news as far as our insurance renewal, health insurance, the PPO being down 1.85%, the HMO down .35%, and the dental down 2.15%. Audrey said that this was the first time in 27 years that all three are decreases. And then we had some other small budget adjustments to just make corrections more accurate. The mix of operating expenditures, we are service organization and mostly salary and benefits, mostly staffing, 77.38% of our budget is on staffing, which our staffing is directly tied to enrollment. This shows our enrollment growth over the last 10 years at 7.99%, which with all our, we are the only district amongst our comparative group of school districts that had an increase. All the other comparators are down over the last 10 years. And this shows the enrollment projections, the historical plus increases plus the projected over the next four years. We'll be doing new enrollment projections in October based on, the enrollment projections are always based on the September 30th Fall Housing Report. So the number of staff, total number of staff, we've had increases over the years due to the enrollment increases and the needs of the students increases, but in this budget, 2018-19, the total staff, we have a reduction of 8.1 total staff. And in the certified area, we are down 1.4 for the 18-19 school budget year. So overall, in the operating funds, we have revenues of $122,886,110 with expenditures of $125,472,700, resulting in a net loss of $2,586,590. But as we talked about at the tentative budget, if that revenue shift didn't happen, this would be, would have been 5.4 million higher, or 2,800 in the positive. And then overall revenues, total revenues including non-operating of $138,806,662 with expenditures of $140,663,154. So overall, total, all funds, net loss of $1,856,492. Again, with that revenue shift, it would have been over $4 million surplus had that, we not had that timing difference with the property taxes. So that's it. Any questions?
Karen?
Chris, I'm on the second page, changes from tentative budget.
Mm-hmm.
Can you share a little bit about how they're determining adequacy for us because it keeps changing for us?
Oh, it's a really complicated formula. I, I don't really have, I didn't really break down the whole.
Okay.
It's...
At some point, can we do that? Or we could talk about it in the finance committee because it keeps fluctuating, and at some point, we're going to need a little bit more, you know, whether we need to talk to them?
Yeah, we're just happening to be right on the edge of the criteria.
And that has always, even when they were speculating that they're moving to the evidence-based, and now that they have...
We were right on the edge both, both times.
Right.
We flip-flopped.
Right. Okay, so that's the first question, and I think I only have a second question, which is about the categoricals. Do we know why they're decreasing special ed summer? Is that a pattern? Is that something new that they're going to do?
No, this, this was a mistake made in the tentative budget. The special ed summer is actually part of the evidence-based model. So, so we won't get that anymore. It's included in the evidence-based model of the $6,495,500, so I shouldn't have had the 10,000 in the tentative budget for special ed summer. So that was just an error in the tentative budget. So it's, it's actually zero for that.
Okay, so bear with me. So at one point, they were saying that all of your students are going to be part of the evidence-based versus now, they'll give us money for the district, and then they'll give us specific money for certain categoricals and certain types of students. Are they moving away from that? That's kind of my bottom line question.
Certain categoricals are still not included in the evidence-based model. The special ed orphanage being one, and the other big one is the private placement, special ed tuition line. Those are, those are two that are not included. And also, transportation is another, is not in the evidence-based model. That is a separate categorical. And the state just, the comptroller just released the fourth quarter from 2018 today. So, so now, which is, which is good news. So we just got that. So transportation, the private placement tuition, special ed orphanage, those are still categorical grants that are not included in the evidence-based model.
Chris?
I just, I mean, thank, thank you. I know we had emails going back and forth on the enrollment, and I think it's just important that whenever we talk about growth in staff, we talk about growth in enrollment, and that's what's driving it because we're fortunate to be a growing district. And then, second, just to reiterate, despite, you know, the negative number at the bottom of the column, if you adjust for the time shift, that we're projecting basically a budget surplus of about 2% of revenue, which is in line with, I think, standards and prudence. So I would not view this as a deficit budget unless that gets said the wrong way, because I think it's just because of the vagaries of what happened with the tax collections. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right, and because of the, the timing, it resulted in a surplus in 18, which increased the fund balance. So now our fund balance, operating fund balance ended at, in the budget, will end budget year 2019 at 45.13%.
Shannon?
Yeah, I have a question about certified staff. Could you explain the increase or decrease? Like, there's a decrease in general ed and then increase in ELL and special ed. Could you explain the decrease in the general ed? It was...
I got it.
Do you have that? It says, "Changes in certified staff." Thanks.
It's not part of the slides.
Second document in the public content?
So it's the primarily, so at the middle school level, where enrollment is down this year at the middle school level. So that, that is really what drove the decrease in general ed, is the decreased enrollment at the middle school level. We had a large eighth grade class graduate last year with a smaller sixth grade class coming in.
I think we got some minor reductions due to some of the curricular changes, too.
Anybody else? So I have no one signed up for public comments involving just the budget? Are there, is there anyone that wants public comment just on the budget? Okay. If not, then I will adjourn the public hearing for the 2018-2019 annual budget, and we will return to the regular meeting. So next on the agenda is our regular public comment. I have no one on the speaker list, but we do accept public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on the agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other agencies. Any public comments? Okay. If not, then we will move on to approval of board meeting minutes. So approval of amended August 14th, 2018, amended August 20, 2018, August 28th, 2018, and September 11th, 2018, and September 17th, 2018 minutes. Are there any changes? Okay, then those minutes stand as presented. The second set of minutes is the August 28th, 2018 minutes, September 11th, 2018, and September 17th, 2018 closed session minutes. And those were discussed, and they stand as presented. All right. Superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any items?
I would like to remove item H, New Policy 6:135 Accelerated Placement Program, from the superintendent's consent agenda.
Okay, item H. Any other items? Okay, so I need a motion for consent agenda minus item H.
I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's consent agenda. A, personnel report. B, financial reports. C, approval of purchase of CDWG Professional Services, Francisco Hyperflex Integration. D, approval of press section four policies. E, approval of press policy for section five. Approval of policy, press policy, section six. And then the approval of the press policies for section seven.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Or no, sorry. Vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. So now I need a motion for item H.
I move that the Board of Education accept as a second reading and adoption, New Policy 6:135 Accelerated Placement Program, which will become effective at the time of its adoption, and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, Section 6 Instruction.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, and I just wanted us to, I actually talked to Dave and Mary and had some questions about, can we talk about what we're going to do with regard to procedure and process with regard to this policy? I understand that it is legislation, and it's part of the press publication updates that came in, that we just approved a bunch of them, but because this is a new policy, I thought it was important for us to articulate to the community process and procedures that'll go along with it, that will be forthcoming.
Well, I'll share a couple comments, and then if Mary has anything she would like to add, certainly she can. First of all, I don't think our current practices are that far removed from this. So I think that if we do need to go back and take a look at our placement process as it currently stands and make some minor adjustments to that, I don't think that that will be significant enough to cause a lot of disruption or anything to the system. What happens when they pass these laws is sometimes they go back and pass follow-up legislation, or they send it to the ISBE for rules and regs. So we, we may not, we may get further clarification of exactly what we're supposed to do that we don't currently have. But I do, I do think that the intent is to be more inclusionary and to expand services to more students and help, and provide equity of access for students to programs. And I think that that's consistent with the way we're trying to structure our current instructional practices. So some of the things we've been doing with elementary examples, for example, of how we're handling acceleration at the elementary levels and things like that, are starting to get teachers to take a look at some different types of classroom practices that, again, are consistent with, I think, the intent of this, which is moving more kids up and giving more kids opportunities. So I do think that one of the things we do want to do, as it specifically relates to our advanced placement, our advanced placement is REACH. We do have kindergarten policies in place, we do have committees in place, we do have appeals processes in place, we do have multiple data points, and our REACH currently applies to ELA and math. So I think if you take a look at this, pending further clarification, I don't think we're in terrible shape as far as making sure that we're in compliance. But in terms of the big picture and what we want to do for programming, I'm hoping that, similar to what we're doing with our other program analysis cycles, that we will do the same for our REACH programming so that we can take a look at how to enhance the program in a comprehensive way for all students.
Dave, when you said comprehensive plan for all students, it would be looking at the whole district, you know, when the students come in as this new policy states, which we do, we do accommodate for that. It's just law now, and then all the way through the system.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yeah, I had a question about this. To me, this policy is wide open. It's, so it's, it's not defined really well. So I, like, there's a line here that says, "It's not limited to students who have been identified as gifted and talented." So it's really trying to encompass a lot more students. So in the meantime, before we can do a full review of REACH, which I know we've wanted to do, like, what do we do in the interim?
So I can give you an example of a family I'm working with at Jefferson, who have, they have a student who did early entrance into first grade last year. So the student is now a second grader, and the student is beyond the grade level curriculum. Formal REACH programming begins in third grade, so we are developing an individual plan for that student.
Think that we're taking a look at some expanded enrichment opportunities for summer school programming. That's something that Mark is going to be working on. When you take a look at the sixth grade math, we have, we don't want students to miss sixth grade math, but at the same time, we're working on a way to accelerate their experience with the seventh grade standards so that those who are more capable of moving up can do that. So I think that there are, the philosophy that we're trying to approach things with, with all students and pushing kids up, I think that we need to continue to refine and get better at those things, but I think that we, our approach is that we, we think that that's important, and I think that we've set some, set the stage for some of those things where we can, you know, further, further our efforts certainly, but I think that our teachers and our directors, our department chairs, I think that there's a consistency in the fact that we are beginning to approach an instruction that is more about pushing kids up and less about gatekeeping, and, and some of that resulted in a lot of the leveling of the curriculum, and it resulted in kids getting stuck at certain points along the way. So I think a lot of what we're trying to do is consistent with the intent of this. I think it's just a matter of continuing to do that work and improve our practices. And then I think, as Mary said, we already have, in certain special types of circumstances, students that are dealt with individually based on their needs at all grade levels. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize and make it sound like we're there yet and that we should be dismissive, but I also think that, I think we're making a lot of, lot of positive efforts consistent with what the intent of this is.
The other piece I would add with, particularly in math, with our Eureka Math Curriculum, every unit has a pre-test aligned to the standards that will be taught. So students who demonstrate that they've already mastered those standards prior to the unit being taught in class have that opportunity for enrichment versus sitting through lessons and content that they already have demonstrated they have mastery of.
Karen?
So the only, you know, the last piece, the reason why this really came to light, the second reading for me, is with the school liaison program, I was fortunate enough to go to Churchville, my middle school, and Edison, my elementary school, and it was the, you know, first time since we've been on the board, what, eight years? So you got to round robin to your original schools. And so it was interesting to see how much has changed in that time. And it seems as though we are doing a lot of differentiation. So for example, when I was at Edison, there were, there was a grade where the teachers had pulled all the students and looked at where they were. And so they had those two teachers in that grade level, and then they had, happened to have a student teacher there, and I forgot the fourth one. And so they all had separate groups of students working with them at their level. So it made me think about, this law actually is good timing for us because of what we've been doing in the groundwork over the years about trying to differentiate even in the classroom or in the grade levels at the schools, that we can, it's a good time for us now to look across the district about how we're going to do this. Because I know you had talked about, we're going to look at REACH, but I think it's bigger than that. I think it's looking at it across the board, not just with REACH, with all students, and bringing them up. And what's our policy? So was that, when you were at Edison, was that literacy, or was it math?
Literacy.
Literacy. So that would have been that grade level's acceleration at elementary school. So it could have been the reading specialist who had pushed in. Sometimes it's a special education teacher, sometimes it's an EL teacher, sometimes it's all of those people, in order to decrease the size of the groups that teachers are working with. And so it's 30 minutes in addition to the minutes they have for their core instruction.
Shannon?
One other thing I have, too, is under number one, I seem to be moving in that direction, too. Decision-making processes involve the student's parents, guardians. So we see that at York now with students and parents being able to choose their classes. And so this is broader now, and would be applied to our whole district, too, involving the student's parents with the decision-making processes. So I, I like that part of this policy.
Okay, anything else? All right, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Okay, next is superintendent's agenda action items. Approval of resolution of the Board of Education transferring money from the education fund to the debt service funds.
We do this every year. This is something that is being done earlier in the year than typical per the suggestion of...
of our auditors. And if you have more specific questions, I will defer to Chris.
So I'll do a motion?
I moved that the Board of Education approve the resolution to transfer money from the education fund to the debt service fund for the purpose of payment of technology leases.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion or questions?
I guess the obvious question is, why are the auditors suggesting we do it earlier?
Because the payments were made already, so they wanted us to move the money in time for the payments.
I think that has a lot of logic behind it.
Any other discussion, questions? All right, go ahead.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes. Six i's, no n's, one absent. Motion passes. All right, next up is approval of resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. I'm going to go ahead and have a motion, please.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 as recommended, and that the president and secretary be authorized to enact the resolution and certificate of authorization.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion, questions?
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes. Six i's, no n's, one absent. Motion passes. Next up is approval of donation to Bryan Middle School.
So as you've probably heard with some of our facility discussions, our auditoriums are starting to show their age, and the sound at the various middle schools has been a problem. And the Bryan PTA is offering to donate $1,687.02 toward the cost of improving their speaker system. I'm told that we have done some recent updates at Churchville and Sandberg. So as it relates to trying to make sure that the three schools have their needs addressed, we are sensitive to that as it relates to this problem, although we haven't completely rectified the problem. This helps, so we're recommending that you approve this donation.
Okay, motion, please? I didn't ask for that again.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from Bryan Middle School PTA in the amount of $1,687.02 for speakers, a direct box, and installation cost for the auditorium. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy 880, gifts to the district.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
As always, I think we want to be cognizant in that and thank our generous PTAs for their donations. We get donations from a variety of different sources. They are always most appreciated and help our schools function and also help us maintain our dollars for equity factors to the schools who may not get as many donations as others. So thank you to the Bryan Middle School PTA. Thank you to all our generous donations from the past.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes. Six i's, no n's, one absent. Motion passes. All right, superintendent's communication, Freedom of Information Act requests.
Excuse me, there were two this time. One requesting certain documents related to the facility's master plan, which was partially granted and partially denied. One requesting specific extracurricular data, which was granted.
All right, next up is Illinois School Code.
So I have here the 2018 edition of the Illinois School Code and the 2014 edition of the Illinois School Code. This is my seventh year as a superintendent in Illinois, and annually, the state of Illinois has passed, on average, more than 100 separate pieces of legislation each year that directly impact schools. Also, to my knowledge, they've repealed exactly one. So I just wanted to explain that since the 214 edition has come into play in the last four years, we are about a quarter inch thicker, which relates into an increase of about 13% in the overall size of the compliance expectations in the state of Illinois over the last four years. So I thought I would share that with you. And then the last thing is the tweet of the week.
Yeah, Jim's got a comment or question.
Did you compare font sizes between the two?
Oh, paper.
I should do that.
It's thin paper.
I think that'll be revealing.
I should, as long as we're on that subject, I will tell you in all fairness, they look approximately the same. But then again, I see worse. Bev?
The tweet of the week goes to Ashley Barra of Lincoln Elementary, and it is a picture of some of her students sitting out on the playground. It is recess time, but instead of going out to play, they chose to read. And the tweet says, "When you start with engagement, you get readers that refuse to play at recess." And of course, all of the ads, @LincolnD205, @Jesaravalo, and hashtag @IgniteD205. So congratulations to Ashley Barra and these emerging readers.
Thank you. All right, any board communications? Chris, Jim, any board communications?
I'm right on the verge, but I'm going to spare you.
All right. Okay, then I got three, there are three meetings to announce that are on the agenda. Monday, October 1st is a finance committee meeting at 6:30 here in District 205 Center. Thursday, October 4th is a learning and teaching committee meeting at 6 o'clock here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, October 9th, is a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. If there are no other comments, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Good night.